A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's make this call to order at Trafford Middle School in the library at seven. Thank you very much. This is going to be a group meeting now. So I'm acting present this evening. Our president unfortunately has been sick for the last three days and can't attend. Sends his regrets. We just left from an executive session which was held just prior to this meeting to discuss personal matters and contract negotiations. For the meeting tonight there will be no roll call vote because we have no motions to be voted upon. Begin with special reports and typically in the routine, Dr. Trey is called on to address the IU's libraries and legislative council which I typically lump together. In the IU, we just had a meeting last week and the issues we've dealt with. What interesting about the meeting was the IU is definitely pushed to the forefront as we have in technology. We actually conducted, all the members conducted the meeting using the iPad. So everything was done electronic, the entire agenda, all issues, all information was done, all part of the process included, no other, these iPads were provided or signed out on loan. And it was an interesting process as we began trying to eliminate the use of paper and speed up the sharing of information. Ran very well and I was very impressed. I thought all these older people in here were doing a great job and I realized I was one of those older people. So I thought I handled that fairly well myself. We discussed the E Academy and the success there. It's a very strong program in its own way and they're now servicing over 400 schools, about 55,000 students over four IU's and the growth is going well. They can't say they're acquiring a profit in any way, shape, or form, but they're certainly sustaining from the input of student fees enough to at least even expand their school management system. So they have a hotline, a trouble line where people can call in through the day and they manage the situations they have related to the variety of courses that are being offered. The third item related to the IU was that we did some agreement with the support personnel and I'm not going to go in great detail, but it follows the trend of what's happening in negotiations today. There is a concern by the personnel involved, usually the same people who took pay freezes last year, that they would deal with a shorter contract. The durations are not as long now, that's a reality anymore. The increases are smaller and certainly they're paying a lot more in relationship to health care. The primary thing is to try to maintain family health care as much as possible. There's much more to it than that, but that's basically seemed to be the highlight of the entire thing. As we step into the next category which dealt with legislative issues, the PSBA conferences in a couple of weeks and that's always a good thing to go to, to in order to get up to date information on where we are as far as hot topics and current information. Plan comms right up there, the status of charter schools, the 15% unsuccessful schools and how they're going to be, if they're in hardship, how they're going to be dealt with. Those seem to be the three real hot items. We talked a little bit about each of those on the way out, but we learned a lot. I asked my colleagues that every year we get our school leader news, there's 109 platform items being presented by PSBA. Don't look at all that stuff, you know it's routine and there's not anything exceptional on it, but there are nine revisions. The nine revisions to the variety of platform items deal with basically being tougher on charter schools and endorsing it. I encourage you at least to look at that piece of it. Also, the PSBA is going through some major reorganization. They're trying to downsize like so many of us are and that's going to take place some this year, but more in the following year. We lost our great leader. Wetzel has left. Tom Gensel has left and gone to become the National School Board President and leading it from Pennsylvania. He'll be sorely missed. Two things to really look at that seem to be brought to the forefront right now is the charter school legislation's out there again. There's a lot of varieties out there and again I'll have more information in a couple of weeks, but Senate Bill 115 seems to be the one that's being pushed to the forefront. But again, we encourage, we are trying to avoid anything being passed on charter school expansion that does not deal more with funding reform. You know, we've had Jack Wagner and other people telling us, hey, they're getting way too much money for what they expend. You know, twice, two-thirds of their budget is free money they're using for public relations and it's not really based on child costs. Well, that's one issue that's being fought. Apparently our legislature has not been very comfortable or very successful in dealing with that issue. So consequently, what we're looking at is in another aspect, and this is coming out from a number of different sources, why don't we look at the double dip pension issue? And this is, there's a lot coming to this to the forefront. We're basically saying that school districts, retirement, retirement costs are figured into the payments that are made to the charter and cyber charter schools that goes to them. So that retirement cost. Now what retirement cost do the cyber charter schools and charter schools have to deal with? But that, that part of the money's been paid to them from the school district. In addition to that, the state is obligated to pay to those same cyber charter schools 50% of that, return that money to them. For what? What role do they have in retirement? So basically what we're trying to say, we being through the PSBA and some other organizations, why don't we just simply remove the school district employee contribution to piecers from the charter school funding formula? You just take that out, it's 15 words, you get rid of those. What that'll do is over five years, it should save the taxpayer another $510 million. Why don't we do that? So it's another avenue besides making them pay, giving them funding based on actual costs to deal with. Okay, that's enough on those issues. That's all I have. May. Okay. And if I could protect Mr. Petrusi?
Thank you, Mr. Trey. All right. Our meeting is September 19th. We had the first ring of the cyber bullying, cyber bullying policy. Open House is the 5th. It's a Monday. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And we also discussed the renovations again and the $9 million project. They are there, they made special notes and special motion in the recognition of Penn Trafford for approving the, our one-ninth of the $9 million that this way they don't have to come and visit us. They're going to tour the other eight districts this month and the vote will be November 21st meeting. We have to get unanimous in all nine school districts to support it. I told Penn Trafford already, it's in the yes column. They got that email from Mr. Lego so that Penn Trafford is, we're definitely in the right direction on that. They're very grateful. The next meeting is the 17th and our goodies for the night was garden salad with homemade ransom balsamic dressing. We had fried shrimp with homemade cocktail sauce and fried zucchini. We had eight claires, we had fudges, we had peanut butter crumpets. And that's all I have on the peritex.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi.
I have one question on the peritex. Did I understand you correctly say that we are the only district at this point?
So far.
Is affirmably bothering you?
Yes.
And they're going to still tour all the other?
Yeah, the other eight, they're going to go the other eight this month here and we're voting on November 21st.
Are they going to their board meetings?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Yes. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation boards, Penn Township?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our meeting on the 27th last Thursday. Couple of issues that came up were the, our field policy for the baseball fields on, particularly Sunday. When we rent, source of income for the rec board is rental of the pavilions and certain pavilions you rent, you get the use of the baseball field and there's been some issues with miscommunication between us, I would say, and PTAA and the use of the fields or people shining up on fields they shouldn't be on, so we're going to be reviewing our policy there. Work continues on phase one which is the dog park and walking trails. Weather permitting, I think that Cheryl told the group that we're hoping for completion this fall and then possibly we'll be able to have some sort of grand opening of that section of the park. So I will keep you informed if that actually happens. And I just wanted to congratulate everybody who was involved with putting on, I don't know what number this was, but the Fall Festival is a complete success. I was there with my daughter and wife on Saturday before the windstorm and we actually had a really good time. It was very well run again. Every year they get better and better at what they do. So as a resident and somebody goes to that every year, I appreciate the efforts that people put into that and I really think it's a shining, you know, shining beacon for our community here in Penn Township. We've never had anything like that before and it's just nice that we have something to call our own. And that's all I have, Mr. President. And next meeting is the last Thursday of October, this month, this is October. Thank you.
Thank you. The Trafford Borough Recreation Board?
Yeah, the meeting was last Monday on the 24th and as you can guess because Trafford Borough being such a financial situation and we are not the shop of recreation boards is pretty solid. They have a fund balance approximately, is $25,000, more than $25,000. They came to us asking us if we could cover $609 for a director of playground. The Borough asked us and we approved that, how about the Borough because they are such dire straits right now. And also we donated $1,000 for the, we'll take a holiday happening which is Light Up Night. Then we also went into our agenda, they also have new policy now for if you want to borrow any money, I mean you, any group, any volunteer group that wants money from the Trafford Borough, say keep a closer track of all their expenses. Now it's an annual community grant application book, but at a maximum it's $5,000. Well, our budget every year just for any projects is approximately between $10,000 and $11,000. But firemen have to do this, emergency medical services have to do this, rec board has to do this, the library has to do this, this all now must be filled out, which I think helps them out, straighten out their budgets and their finances, that's quite right there into it. Can I mention last month too about, we was concerned about the $11,000 check that the last one written for the BY project returned to the rec board and at that time the Trafford Council thought they had made that donation to them, that they did their investigating and checked all the bookwork and the $16,000 really came from the Trafford Recreation Board. And all that money is because of the auction which we have here. The BY pond and fountain working perfectly. They want to have a special appreciation to Mr. Leonard because the geese are gone and the path is working, everything, the pond is working very well and everybody's satisfied, he's getting high use. And our next meeting is, oh, the Halloween parade's the 28th. Trick or treat night's the 31st and our next meeting is the 29th. That's all I have to strike, Mr. President.
I have one comment. Those were either homing geese or vengeful geese because we have them all back in Penn Township, Mr. Leonard.
We went, we are very indebted to you and Mr. Bill Sandler says he didn't, he realizes the game commission is not as good as Mr. Dallas Leonard is. I suppose they repeat that.
That's all. Penn Borough, I have, do not have a report. P chart, Mrs. Issa?
Thank you, Mr. President, or yeah, Mr. Acting President. Okay, we just had our meeting today at 5 o'clock. Starting in November, we are going to move our meetings to 4:30 on Monday. Still the first Monday in the month, but we're going to do it at 4:30. We passed our budget this year with no increase to any of the communities or the school district. The general fund balance is up about approximately $9,000 from last year and as we talked about last month, that, yeah, last month, that has to do with saving costs on printing the program, et cetera. We also are having a wine tasting this Saturday. If you're interested, you know, see me after the meeting, Bill. Mr. Wine himself. Okay. And last, on 11/17, November 17th, we're having the Holiday Kickoff Concert. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, we will be calling for an executive session, but we see no need for an executive session. So at this particular time, we'll turn the bulk of the remainder of the meeting to Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. First, on information, we have a group, Energy Education here. You have the copy of their presentation if you want to get that out now and I think there's people in the stands, I'm playing sports here, people in the audience have a copy. I don't have one, but I'm sure it's, could you mind if I borrow your copy? I gave all my copies away. Thank you. And I would want, I'd like to introduce Ross, and I forgot Ross's last name. Ross Kelly and Tim Matt and me from Energy Education. And Ross will be going through the presentation with you and answering any questions that you might have about Energy Education. So Ross, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ross Kelly. I head the Eastern Division for an energy conservation research, engineering, and consulting firm called Energy Education. We are the leading energy conservation firm in the country focused on schools and what I want to do is provide you a brief overview of our program and our proposal for the Penn Trafford District with the intent of maximizing our time for questions that you may have. The goal is not to make this a formal presentation, but an information exchange. So I will not be offended if you have reason to interrupt at any point, ask questions and probe as deeply as you can. Our objective is for you to learn about the program, learn about our proposal and what it can do for the Penn Trafford District so that you can then make an informed decision as to whether or not this is something that you, who you might be suitable for the district.
Now, he really means that. We've met twice, I believe, and we, Brett and I, really hammered him with questions and he, when he says just interrupt me, he really means that this, that's all part of the process of learning about this. So if any of you, you know, just shoot away with the questions, that's good.
Thank you for that because I genuinely do. Energy conservation, I'm assuming every one of you have had some experience with energy conservation projects in one form or another. If that's the case, you probably have experienced some of the challenges that energy conservation projects present in terms of tracking, measuring, verifying what's saved, why was it saved, who gets credit for it, all of those things. If there's dollars to be saved, are the dollars real savings? Everything associated with, with energy conservation, we have lived it for the last 25 years. Our focus is research, looking at best practices related to energy consumption and energy conservation in a K-12 environment. That's what we know. The program I want to overview to you tonight is in more than 1,200 districts around the country, including over 20 districts here in the state of Pennsylvania with some very, some of your neighbors are in there, including Mount Lebanon, Norwin, what am I missing?
South Butler, South Valley.
Thank you. So we have a number of school districts that are in the program. Ultimately, if this is something after we conclude this discussion that you see conceivable for your district, then our proposal would be for you to talk to our clients and get to know the program, get to know the specifics of it from their experience as opposed to Tim or myself being up here presenting to them.
And I think that's a good point. What Ross told us is, you know, once we present to the board, if you think that this is something that you even want to research further, he will set up meetings to go to Mount Lebanon, to go to Norwin and look at their program and see what they do. Not really non-binding, you just, if you want to go, we'll set up a meeting and we'll set that up.
Here's why we emphasize that as much as we do. This program is, is unique and hopefully you will discover that it's unlike any energy conservation program you've experienced. And here's what I mean by that. This is not a program designed to sell new equipment or to get you to upgrade your existing equipment, buy new technologies. This program has no capital outlay. It has no upfront cost. It is not intended to change anything structurally within the district other than choices you make to change on your own, independent of this program. It will not only reduce your energy consumption by 20 to 30% or more, but that reduction in consumption presents the opportunity for the district to net over $115,000 in the first year of the program. And when I say net, I'm talking about dollars that are in your utility budget today that will go to the utility companies to pay for those utilities, but with this program, we will be able to generate savings that after all costs of the program are paid in the first year, you will have $115,000 or more in reserve in that utility budget that can be used for purposes other than paying utilities. That translated over the first five years of the program will net the district over $870,000. Over the first 10 years of the program, over $3 million. So we're talking about fairly significant savings and we're talking about it in the context of a program based on this premise. And I guess I'll ask you to test your own sensibilities and your experiences within the district to see if this holds true for you. Here's what we know after 25 years of research. We know that above and beyond everything you can do with the most efficient lighting, the most efficient chillers and boilers with solar, with everything you can do with automation and technology to reduce your energy consumption, there's still more than one-third of your consumption that is unnecessary or wasted consumption that with a conservation program can be captured and converted into savings. So this is a program not based on new equipment or new technology. It's incremental to all of those things that you may choose to do or you may already be doing. It is finding as incremental dollars that are being consumed in unnecessary consumption. I'll pause and see if there are any questions to date.
Could you possibly paint one scenario of what you're talking about in a practical picture?
Yes, and the scenario that I'll paint is one of about 1,500 items that we focus on. And so in, by itself, it may seem insignificant and it may not seem like a lot of savings, but I'll give you an example. And I don't know if this is true for this district. Typically cafeteria workers come in in the morning to prepare for the noon meal. There is a default behavior, not just on behalf of cafeteria workers, but every morning, that when you walk in in the morning, you start turning things on. They turn on steam tables perhaps at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning in preparation for the noon meal. Those steam tables take about 40 minutes to ramp up to temperature. They will turn them on two, three hours in advance just to have them off and ready to go. There is a couple of hours of savings on that little incident every day in every school. There are about 1,500 of those kinds of little seemingly insignificant behaviors that if captured and converted into adjusting that behavior can translate into capturing that savings.
So is it fair to say that the vast majority, not all of your savings proposal books would be related to behaviors and actions and just adjusting how we do things opposed to anything else?
Yes, there are two, two forms. That's a very good question. Our savings come in two forms. One is what we just described, modifying behavior in terms of making people more aware, more conscious, more cognizant of day-to-day activities and the unintended consequences of energy consumption related to those behaviors. The other half of our savings comes from your equipment, your existing equipment. Equipment, just like your car, needs to be retuned on an own, one basis. Most school districts in this country, and I'll, we are in districts with 120,000 students with massive operation status, do not have the resources to continually tune and update and recommission your equipment. So the other half of our savings comes from us having trained certified engineers that come into the district for the purposes of monitoring your equipment and your infrastructure to ensure, A, that it's performing as it's supposed to be, when it's supposed to be, not on, when it's not supposed to be, and that it's optimized in terms of its tune. So our savings, you can almost see 50/50 of our savings coming from behavior and from optimizing and maintaining your infrastructure.
So then the one bold statement you have on one of your pages, without the need to purchase any new equipment, we would need to upgrade, tune up, revitalize or something to our existing equipment?
No, none of our savings require you to make any changes, any capital outlay. When we say upgrade, we're talking about tuning, fine tuning, in the same way you would tune your car. So now, in the course of that, we will discover equipment that may at some point need to be replaced. In those circumstances, we will inform you of that, we'll make recommendations in terms of how you can optimize that with, by maintaining it. Or if you need to replace it, we don't get credit for the savings that you generate by replacing that new piece of equipment. So the savings we're talking about is separate from any physical, mechanical, or technological changes that you may choose to make.
What would be base our payments to you on?
Our, our, we have a fee structure that is based on about, we do a 10-year calculation of savings and I have a matrix that outlines that 10-year savings if any of you are interested in. We do a 10-year projection of savings. Our fee is based on about 12 and a half percent of that 10-year savings compressed into a 48-month fee schedule. And the rationale for that is that it's difficult for us to do a 10-year contract in the district. So, but our fee, what we are paid on is based on a portion of the savings, about 12 and a half percent over a 10-year period, compressed into a 48-month period.
And a down payment?
None.
Was there any guaranteed savings?
There are guarantee, our guarantee and the financial structure, and I appreciate that question. The program is structured financially in two ways. Number one, to ensure positive cash flow from day one, and I'll talk about that, that gets to your question about down payment, to your question about guarantee. Our guarantee says that every dollar of cost associated with this program is guaranteed to be paid for out of the savings as calculated by the district. And I'll talk about that mechanism momentarily. So we provide you an independent measurement and verification software program for you to do the measurement of the consumption and savings based on actual utility bills. And our guarantee says that every dollar of cost associated with this program will be paid for out of the savings or we write you a check for the difference. So that's the essence for guarantee.
When you're, when you're dealing with a school district, who's your typical point person that helps you to make these calculations and analysis? Is it your maintenance staff, is it your tech staff?
These are very good questions. You're leading me right into it. I like this. Here's the way we engage our clients. We work with them to identify someone within the district that would assume a responsibility as a district energy manager. So essentially this program funds a district energy manager. That individual is someone preferably within the district today and they in some cases are a teacher, a coach, maintenance director, are a maintenance worker, principal, assistant principal. It is someone who takes on a part-time stipend responsibility as the district energy manager. That individual works with our team of engineers and consultants who come into the district on an ongoing basis for the purposes of executing the program. That individual would have a direct reporting accountability of someone within the administration but is working with our team of engineers to execute the program on a daily basis.
Not to undo any labor of the point, with your 1,200 or so K-2 school districts, where have you typically targeted that point personally, within the maintenance staff or otherwise?
Uh, this is a great question. No, the answer is, here's what we're looking for and we're almost independent of where they come from within the district. What we're looking for are attributes. We're looking for good interpersonal skills, good leadership skills. This program is a lot about tracking down unnecessary consumption during occupied periods of time. So we're looking for someone who doesn't flinch when you talk about getting up at 4:00 in the morning to do a building audit. So the primary attributes we look for are someone that has good interpersonal skills, good leadership skills, and has a passion for this kind of endeavor. And they come from all, all aspects of the district, but that's what we're primarily looking for.
Thank you.
Questions?
You said you're doing work with the Nolan School District. Do you have a contact person?
Yes, we do.
And you can provide us?
Certainly, certainly, both the superintendent as well as the business administrator.
Those are your two contacts?
Yes.
How long have you been? It just boggles my mind how for years we've gotten peanuts, Matt, and we're supposed to get some kind of energy savings that bite into this building and it never developed.
You're allowing me to speak to one other aspect of the program that's not referenced in any of the materials.
Please.
I'll say it straight out and then I'll give my commentary. And incremental to what we do to execute this program, our And incremental to what we do to execute this program, our clients have total access to our engineering and consulting staff for any energy-related matter you encounter. I'll give you an example. Just before we came over here tonight, I was on the phone with one of our lead engineers who was asked to go into North School over in the eastern part of the state. They are having problems with their, they are putting in new chillers. They've got very old equipment, very old facilities, North Schoolville, Pennsylvania, National PA. And incremental to our program, they're asking for help in terms of where should we start? How do we prioritize? We sent an engineer in specifically to help them do an analysis in terms of how they begin to replace that antiquated equipment. So the matter you raised, as well as any other matter that comes up related to energy management, our team is available to provide incremental support to you, no additional fee. Everything we do is within the bounds of that, that fee structure that you're looking at right now.
So you've had some gas well background in?
That is correct. We have certified engineers in virtually every aspect of energy management, energy conservation, every type of equipment, every type of technology, yes.
That should be a good place.
What about negotiating with the energy companies as far as rates? Because I know myself, I was on the phone today with a gas company in my house.
Yes, yes. We, in addition to you having a lead engineer, you will get two other resources that will be responsible to the district. Number one is a data specialist who will be working with your energy specialist to support all aspects of the utility bills, what to look for with the utility bills, looking for errors, looking for inappropriate taxation, looking for all of those things that you may be paid that no one really has the expertise to really look at. And then therefore going back to the utility providers to negotiate reimbursements, to negotiate those kinds of issues.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot, I have a tough question for you.
Yes.
Is your fee schedule negotiable or not?
It is typically not, and I'll, and I'll say probably more directly here that it would not be in this case, and I'll tell you why. The threshold for our program being economically viable, both to you and to us, is typically right at a million dollars a year in annual expenditures. You are right on the bottom of that threshold in terms of districts that would make this program economically viable. So it would be very challenging for us to reduce that in the certain things.
Now, as you may think of other questions, we've, you know, as far as the vetting process, when we first met with Tim and Ross, Brett and I were very, well, we've been down this road, blah, 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 you know, we were skeptical, and Ross is like, great, we love skepticism, and we want to deal with that. So we met with them twice, and that's our first level of vetting to get even to this point. And the second point is there's a handful of superintendents in the state that I have a lot of respect for, that they really run a tight ship. Dr. McNamee, although retired, he is one of those that I respect. Dr. Kerr in Norwin, Doug Alkins in Athens, in Athens, PA, and Jopin Passadnik in Chambersburg, people I have tremendous amount of respect for, and they have, they have done this program. So that allowed me to say, okay, let's at least look at it. We did our vetting here locally, and now they're in front of you. So I just wanted the process that we went through before Ross got here.
I'm passing out. You may have seen this, you may have not.
I have one question.
Yes.
In typical energy management systems, the biggest bang for your buck is heating, cooling, and lighting systems.
Yes.
Now, the boilers that we have here and the lighting, you know, they're, they're a big consumer because we have fire tube boilers which have the, you know, the jet burners. So your biggest savings is you're going to do a pattern buffing of the schools is what you're going to do? So it would be basically systems being installed or schedules is basically what you're saying throughout each school, each building, heating, cooling, and the operation of the school?
Correct, that's correct. And, and looking at ramp-up period, with ramp-up times and optimizing and fine-tuning those ramp-up times to add them at temperature when school starts, those kinds of things, I guess.
Because we already have set point settings.
Yes.
With lighting, heating, cooling, that's already being utilized as we speak.
And you're, you're raising another good point on the front end of our program. One of the things we'll do is obviously work with you to identify what you're already doing, your set points and all of those things, to ensure that we are working in accordance with your existing guidelines. So to the degree the board has an energy policy today, to the degree that the district has a set of guidelines regarding set points and other operational practices, we will work with you to ensure that we're working in conformance with that. To the degree those do not exist, we'll work with you to establish those so that we have assurance that everything we're doing is in accordance with your existing guidelines. So you would obviously be the first point of contact for us if you were to start this program, because the first thing we're going to do is look at everything you're either already doing or intend to do so that we can dovetail everything we're doing within This represents on the front, a sampling of savings with our Pennsylvania client districts. On the back, you will see a more complete listing of school districts in Pennsylvania that are engaged in the program. The, the one thing I want to point out on the bar chart on the front, if I may, the percentage is percent of reduced consumption, kilowatts, gallons, V2Us. The dollars inside the bar are what that reduced consumption has translated to in terms of savings for that district. The length of time, there's significance to that length of time, the number of months that you see reflected there. Those districts that are beyond the forty-eight month period are continuing to get our support for no fee. So the significance of the, the investment is that it is that four-year investment, but you continue to get support ongoing beyond that four-year period. So I just wanted to point that out.
How does that make sense for your company?
That's a good question. We get that question a lot. It is our marketing here.
Yes, just to say it's, it's sales, it's marketing for you, just to show district savings.
Exactly.
So you've, you've obviously done an internal audit and analysis to how much of your personnel's time is dealt, dedicated beyond forty-eight months. And you took your copies of agreements, if, before you leave, I don't know if anybody else wants one, I don't know how big they are, but I'd like that.
I have two copies, and there are only twelve items in the contract. So they're not this, they're like eight.
I like this.
So yes, I'll share with you. Prior to coming to Energy Education, I headed the consulting division for Hewlett Packard. This program violates all of the consulting norms of the industry. One of the primary revenue models in the consulting business is the backend support. Every one of you has engaged in something that has required you to purchase backend support. That's where the revenues are in a typical services or consulting model. Energy Education violates all of those principles and has done very well for itself for the last twenty-five years. But you're asking a question that we get asked all the time.
Can you tell us how Norwin has done in its first year?
Norwin, I can't. It's not reflected here, but I can actually track it for you. They are at about twenty-three percent right now. As a matter of fact, they're about to get an award.
Oh.
We are affiliated with the EPA Energy Star program, which means two things to you. One, we work with you, we provide a consultant that works with you to facilitate Energy Star certification. To the degree you are interested in having your buildings Energy Star certified, that comes as part of the program as well. The other aspect of, or the other significance of our affiliation with Energy Star, Energy Star is a PR machine. You will, by embarking on this program, number one, you will be among the top ten percent of school districts in the nation relative to energy conservation, and you will be recognized as such with press releases, with award presentations, and all of the things that Energy Star does to recognize its influence. So there's a, there's a significant side benefit to our program, facilitating what you discovered.
Look at this bar graph. You have displayed your different districts, take for example, the high Blue Mountain, two million, three hundred, two eighty-eight, eighty-four months. That's cumulative over those eighty-four months.
That is, that is correct.
And then you have these other school districts like Lewisburg, two fifty-seven, five fifty-three for twenty-four months. Is that reflective of the fact that they're smaller, different sizes?
Smaller, less time in the program?
But even if you average them out, the number, the cumulative number averages out to a lesser figure for?
Blue Mountain is, is obviously a marquee district for, for many reasons. They just, the significance of our program and the success of our program is, is driven by three factors. Number one, the, the passion and dedication of that energy specialist, and every one of you can probably appreciate that very quickly. Number two is the support and the drive of this body right here. Blue Mountain embraced this program and says, we're not just going to be good, we're going to be great, and they committed themselves to being great, and you see it reflected in those numbers.
So that thirty-eight percent is consistent average over the full eighty-four months?
That's correct.
Three years?
That's correct.
And how would Blue Mountain compare to Penn Trapper School District as far as facilities for the, for the, for the numbers that we'd be plugged into the equation?
Blue Mountain's facilities, first of all, they are as old a treasure facility. I don't know how many buildings they have, but I can certainly look that up. But they would be very comparable. They would be very comparable to Penn Trapper.
What percentage of the school districts actually qualify to meet your program?
You mean from a, from a?
Obviously, you said we're.
From expenditure standpoint?
Yeah, you said we're on the, we're on the bottom line. Are we looking at half?
In Pennsylvania, there are, and this is a month-old data, but there are probably a hundred and twenty school districts in the state of Pennsylvania that we qualify for.
Okay, so a quarter or a fifth?
That's correct.
Do we get a, and a report on the savings per building?
You get a quarterly, a quarterly report.
And, and it seems if I read it right, it seems a breakdown, it says per campus, but you're talking about high school being one, every building you're calling a campus thing.
That's correct.
So we get a quarterly report from every building with input and savings.
You would, you, you would, many of our clients do this, and I'm not proposing this, but I'm just saying many of our clients, because of the data that Energy Cap generates and the analytics that it provides, it gives you the basis from which to do a competitive, a friendly competition from school to school. I don't, I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying a lot of our clients choose to do that, because you will be able to see on an apples-to-apples basis what each school is doing relative to consumption and savings. Yeah, so your energy manager produces a monthly report for the administration, typically a quarterly report for the board. If you wanted a monthly report, that is available to you. It's typically not provided to the board unless they request it, but that kind of data will be available to you on a monthly basis.
They could pull grab sample in a ton, right?
Exactly. You could, you, you will now have, you will now have an individual that you could say, tell us what the consumption and savings has been in this school between March of last year and March of this year, and tell us what the variables were relative to weather, relative to lighting, new equipment, et cetera, et cetera. And tell us what the rate variance was, et cetera. I apologize for this I chart, and I promise it's the last handout. It's just another sampling, goes back to the conversation we were having about Energy Star. This program, in addition to tracking the financial impact of energy consumption and conservation, it also tracks and calculates the environmental impact of energy conservation. So you will not only be getting reports relative to your financial savings, you'll be getting reports again to the degree that you want them, on what is the reduction in our carbon footprint? What is the impact of our reduced greenhouse gas emissions as a result of this program? This is what Energy Star looks at. These are the kinds of things that they're looking at, keeping them to a financial system.
If we become as a district Energy Star certified?
Certified, yes.
Is there's any, any sort of tax benefit from the state?
There, you know what, that's a very good question, specific to Pennsylvania, and I don't know the answer to that, but that's a very good question. In New Jersey, there are significant incentives relative to Energy Star certification. In New York, there are incentives.
Do you know if there's any grants from Pennsylvania for school districts to get into your program to help defer the cost?
I do not believe there are grants available to defer the cost for this program in Pennsylvania. There are grants that this program will be the beachhead for you finding grants for other things such as solar, geothermal, other capital intrinsic type initiatives that you might choose to advocate at some point. Because part of our PMD is in affiliation with the Energy Star program, is tracking grants and funds for other initiatives beyond this.
Who would be able to answer the question about the tax savings?
You just gave me an action item.
Okay.
And that's, the question is, what are the tax implications for getting Energy Star certified relative to Pennsylvania?
Right, I mean, we could save additional savings because they don't sell the program, not only to us, to the districts.
You just gave us an action item.
Okay, thank you.
Where do you, you're, you're on this last chart you gave us, environmental savings matrix, will you pull your CO2 samples out of chimney?
No, out of reduced consumption.
Oh, okay, so you.
By reducing your kilowatts, gallons, your V2Us, what does that reduced consumption translate to?
It's an integral reduction.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So that, that's just another example of the kind of analytics that the Energy Cap report will generate for you. I know I sound like I work for Energy Cap. It's just, it's an extraordinary piece of software.
So every bit of these are generated by your software that we, everything we're looking at is generated?
Everything you're looking at has been generated by Energy Cap, and all of the bar chart of other districts, that data was provided by the districts, not by us. So that's the other key. Every bit of data generated from this program will be generated by the district, not by us.
And how, how long have you been selling this to school districts in Pennsylvania?
We've been in business since nineteen eighty-six. We've been in Pennsylvania since nineteen ninety, I believe.
Since nineteen ninety, you signed up roughly twenty percent of eligible school districts?
Yes, yes. Here's the, the unstated part of that question, maybe, and I don't mean to project, but we get this question a lot too. Why wouldn't everybody be doing this?
That's kind of where I was.
Yeah, here's the key. This is, if this were about just putting in monitors or putting in new equipment, and you didn't have to be that concerned about it or that focused on it, it could work. This is about a commitment to essentially say, we're going to be a leader in the area of energy conservation, the same way we're going to be a leader in math and science. So that commitment starts here, and not every district is prepared to embark on that level of a campaign. This is the most comprehensive program available to schools in the industry, and there are cheaper and lesser intrusive things you could do for energy conservation. You would not achieve anything close to these results, but there are other things you could do.
Thank you.
Wind power, has that been successful, right, in your clients? I'm assuming Blue Mountain, wind power?
Wind, yes.
Blue Mountain's been successfully?
Yes. That's the other thing, with, with wind power, solar, geothermal, alternative fuel sources, we work in complement with all other energy initiatives. And so we will, we work with our clients to help them incorporate alternative fuel sources and other types of energy initiatives in addition to this program.
One other question on mine. Has there been any school district that you got into an agreement with that didn't end so well that you guys ended up not breaking a contract and not?
I was about to go there with earlier question about what happens, worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, we have had seven instances in our history across the country in which we failed to cover the savings in the first year. In each of those, so we had to write seven checks, which was a very painful endeavor for us. In each of those, we were able to make up the savings in the second year, but we have had occasions where, on seven occasions, we have written checks. The second part of your question. We have had districts, and I can name a couple here in Pennsylvania, and I don't know if they're on the chart or not, where at the conclusion of the four-year contractual agreement, where they've paid all of the fees, and now they're going to continue the program, or they have the option to continue the program for no fees, who have said, "We're going to drop the program."
Do you know how many of that worked out, I guess?
The one that comes to mind right now in Pennsylvania is Wild Missing. Wild Missing just finished their four-year contract, which means from that point forward, the net savings for them would go up dramatically because they're no longer sharing the savings with us. But new superintendent, new administration, new board came in and said, "We're going to stop the program." So we have had those.
Thank you.
What's your justification, other than new admin and new boards?
It is typically that. I mean, where we've seen districts stop the program at the conclusion of a four-year contractual relationship, it's been a change in administration.
Sounds like all they gain out of is laying off one low-paid employee.
Exactly. Twenty grand to make, believe me, you could look at the financials 12 different ways and not, it would not make sense. But, and that's not to pass judgment. You, like every other district, has faced some pretty hard times. And so you have to look at every possible...
That's why we're talking to you.
Well, there's an assumption, and it's a false assumption, that, well, we've been doing this for four years, this should be on autopilot by now. And the reality is, it's not. I'll take this one step further. We have had districts go with us for four years, stop the program. Now remember, they get lifetime support for us, no additional fee, ever. Stop the program, three years later, a new administration comes in and they hire us back again for a four-year fee. So I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
With those seven districts that you wrote checks to, would you feel that the problem with the in-house programming, the person they hired, whatever they're doing, if that person had done better, it would have been often a failed program?
There are two factors. And the most common is the energy specialist. And we do a pretty good job of working with our clients to identify the person, the right person. And that's a collaborative exercise we go through with our clients. But obviously, we've missed on some of those occasions. Here is, the underlying assumption was that energy specialist thinks, "Okay, maybe I can do this sitting at a desk, just monitoring things from a PC." This is not a desk-oriented job. This is about being out in the buildings, being on the rooftops, being in the boiler rooms, tracking down that unnecessary consumption at 4:00 in the morning, 11:00 at night, 7:00 a.m. on a holiday weekend. That's the nature of this job, and not everyone is committed to that kind of undertaking.
Not to me.
So we have any other questions? You know, this is something for us, for you to consider, look at, ponder, and we can talk about it next week. Do we want to go further? Do we want to go to the next step, which would be organizing a trip to Norwalk or Mount Lebanon to see what they do, ask any kind of questions that they have? Because you're going to have questions that pop up between now and whenever. So those are the times, we can write those questions down and take a road trip to see these places. Okay? Any other questions for Ross?
So far, I've only had one action item that I've gotten here.
An agreement.
Oh, the contract, I'll leave that. Brett, I'll leave that with you. So yes, I'll do that.
You probably want to leave it with our esteemed leader there, and he can distribute the report just so I get a copy.
Yeah, Brett will take care of it.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so thank you, Ross.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate that.
I'll get the contract.
Okay, very good, thank you. Again, we'll talk about this next week, and if we want to organize step two in this, we can discuss it at that time. Just when Mr. Brackler, if possible, you talk to the board about this next week also? I appreciate that.
I assume they'll get a look at it, agree with you, so...
Brett and I kind of took this on our own here at this point. We haven't really included Mr. Brackler yet, but just because there was other stuff going on, so he...
I'm good.
He was busy at the time, so he'll definitely be involved from now on.
Thank you.
We wanted to gauge any of your interest. You know, we didn't want to put him through something and meetings and unnecessary, unless we thought that there was some sort of interest on your part to move forward.
I think there's an interest.
I have a high monitor.
I think there's an interest.
So we will lay some groundwork and some plans definitely for next week.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ross. Tim, we'll see you soon. Okay, our next item under information is a resolution for bonds. And Brett will kick me under the table as I, if I mess any of this up, but our bond people called us and indicated that, you know, with the bond rates this low right now, there's some benefit to actually borrowing money in increments under $10 million as we look forward to different building projects. And since we have money coming off the books as far as our bonds are being paid off for the next, for the last go-around with a building project, that it might be a good time right now to start looking at bond rates and bonds and how we can do that without raising taxes, just continuing our existing debt structure. Because we know that we have issues in the buildings and that we have to address some things. So all we're asking for in the next meeting is a non-binding resolution that says, gives Brett permission to go out and look for a bond rates and talk to our bond people, okay? At the end of the day, in November, when Brett comes back and you don't like what he says, that's fine, it goes no further. But if he comes back and said, and you like what he's saying in relation with any building project or your future plans, you might want to do something, we have that resolution on the books. But it's a non-binding resolution to research bond rates, okay? Does that sound like something, again, we're not committing ourselves to anything? And it's very important to notice, I'll have Dallas say it.
You almost read my mind.
I did.
The point of clarification, I want to make sure it was clear for all of the board, especially the ones that are writing, that this would be under the current parameters of debt service. We have approximately 9.5 mils, current operational capital available. And if we're going to move forward, everybody has to recognize the fact that we're sitting in buildings that are deteriorating and need work. And what are our bonds retired on, Brett? What's the...
215.
Yeah, 215.
And we have about 8, 8 million?
Yes.
So we'd be folding, I don't know if folding was the right term?
Wraparound.
Is this considered a wraparound, though?
Well, it would be, if, depending on what we ultimately borrowed, it would be a wraparound because we'd be level funded the whole way out for the remainder of the bonds. If we only did $10 million, it wouldn't be really a wraparound because the debt service would be much significantly lower, so it wouldn't be as significant. But if we ended up doing the maximum that we're permitted, which is about $60 million, that would be a wraparound and it would be equally funded for the next 30 years.
With no increase in taxes.
And the understanding is that this is money for buildings, renovation, upgrades, whatever you need. It's not fund money, it's not money that we're going to buy anything else. It's going to be buildings and grounds money.
The question over here is, what does our existing debt structure offer us? And we're not going to really know until we do this research. We're just guessing it's 55 million to 60 million, okay?
And at the conclusion, the mill we raised last year?
Yes.
Definitely going to be more.
But we don't know that for sure until we kind of go through this process.
I think one important factor that everybody needs to consider is how low the bond rates are. I think they're probably lower than they've been since I've been breathing. Would that be close?
Well, I don't know that they're right now at the all-time lowest levels, but they're pretty darned close to the all-time...
And they're lower than what we're carrying now?
Yes, they're lower than we're carrying right now, that's correct.
Is this kind of like refinancing?
No, it's not refinancing. No, this is new money.
It's new money that we're going to need to do the work that has to be done. But if we don't, I don't know, we don't know the status of Plan Con. Hopefully, one of our esteemed board members is going to come back in a couple weeks with good news on Plan Con.
Yeah, I hope it's going to be good news.
But it doesn't sound promising, I know.
I have just a couple pages coming around to y'all that kind of summarizes where we're at and where we could potentially be. Okay, so you can see existing issues right now, the series of 2003, we have $570,000 left. The average rate on that is 3.286%. The final maturity is May 1st of 2015. We could refinance that, but with the costs involved of doing the refinancing, there's really no benefit to doing that. The other series of 2008, which is the one that we refinanced from the 98 bonds, I believe it was, yeah, we funded the 98, $8.2 million outstanding. It is not callable, we cannot refinance it. When we did it in 2008, that was our refinancing of it. Again, same final maturity of May 1st of 2015. What we need to consider is, for purposes of discussion, I asked the people, you know, what could we do with our existing debt? And basically, we're looking at approximately a $60 million project. Items for consideration, you can see when the board decides to move, the design of the project, the construction, what we want our debt service to be, the millage impact, if any, other short-term interim project needs. And I think Dallas, that's kind of to his point, that, you know, we may need to replace a roof at McCullough before we get to renovating it. That could be $500,000. We could use some of these funds to do that as well. And what PDE does with Plan Con. So again, if you flip to the next page, you'll see in the current year we're in, our payment is $2.7 million. That's net. Next year, $2.7 million. 2014 fiscal year, $2.7 million. And then finally, when we get out to 2015, the payment drops to just under $1 million. So the average age of our bonds remaining is 1.43 years, and the average rate we're paying is 3.295. Right now, short-term rates are in the ones. Now, when you get to the back end, you'd be in the threes most likely, but the short-term rate is in the ones.
At what point in the bond's lifespan does that start switching? Is it incremental switch?
It's incremental, yes. The rate goes up every year you go out, basically, for the most part. Okay, and the final page, this shows how the debt would be structured. If you can see the red and yellow bars, that is our current debt. So that's taken us up to the 2.7, 2.7, 2.7. If we borrow the $10 million only, that would get, and this is without any Plan Con, the funds available for the project would be $9.6 million. The rest of it is the issue costs. You can see, the purple line then represents what the payment on that bond would be. So in 2016, we would be considerably less than the $2.7 million, and it goes on down further. The green represents the total if we borrow the entire amount that we can. So if, you can see in the green box, if there is PD reimbursement, our project funds would be approximately $52 million. If there's no Plan Con, we lose $10 million. So depending whether there's Plan Con or not, that's either 42 or 52 million dollars that we have available for projects, but it never exceeds the $2.7 million that we're at right now.
And how well-positioned are we currently, if the Plan Con does give us the promise that we don't think they're going to yet? How well-positioned are we project-wise to qualify for that in the running funding cycles? Like, we have to have a project throughout the Plan Con.
We have, and Hank has already submitted three plans to PDE for Plan Con, which put us in the pipeline for reimbursement if, in fact, Plan Con comes through. We're not committed to any specific project, but we have projects in the books that can be tweaked and adjusted as we go forward. Did I say that correctly, Hank?
That's correct.
And you have reasonable-sized projects for the high school project building?
Yes, that was the first one we gave.
So again, the fact that we put the Plan Con projects in and there seems to be a sense that we will be doing something in the near future, it's just, it may make sense to start borrowing some money before the end of this year to take advantage of the bank-qualified rate, and then we can do another borrowing next year if we're really intent on moving forward. So that's why we're just asking for a resolution. I talked to a bond counsel this morning, Chris Brewer, who's been in here before with you guys. He will send us a sample resolution to put on for next week if we want to go forward. But again, it commits us to nothing other than we can start the process if you want to go forward with it.
Can you pull us together a number for the high of the 42.6 in that neighborhood on down? You said we get a better rate for under 10? Could you give us a comparison of those numbers?
I can get the bond counsel to run, well, what do you want to compare the 10 million to? I guess is the question.
Well, the other increments that we'd be extrapolating out over whatever given year, three, four, five years, to pull the money together to start developing the projects, because I hate, literally hate borrowing money. We gave away this number for any other time. I hate charge cards, I hate borrowing money. The reality of it is, we have to do something in these buildings, and we want to do it under current millage. And one of the huge factors to keep it under current millage, in my opinion, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is the bond rates that are going to be available to us. Now, if we start an analysis to buy into this bond program, how long can we hold that rate? Like, if we say, okay, we're going to buy, you use the number 10, I'll throw the number out. I'm not knowledgeable like you are in that 10. How soon can we lock in a rate that keeps us at that low 1 something one percent?
Well, again, we would need to move as quickly as possible with the deal being closed before December 31st.
The rule is that if you do a $10 million a year, that's when you, under 10 million is what you would... That is where you get your best rate. So since there's only two or three months left in this year, we can get 10 million out of the way. I think that's even almost, you know, that's a discussion. I think we don't want to get ahead of ourselves. Right now, we're looking at rates and making a decision whether that's something that you want to do. We have, and you have, as the board, have to make some big decisions about what you want to do as far as building projects. There's a sense that I'm getting from the board and the community over my year here that the high school is something that we feel needs to be addressed and we can address it. So I think we can start talking about doing something at the high school. But even that, I think, is a step further than what we're talking about right now. Right now, let's just look at the bond and see if that is something that is worthwhile. And in November, and as part of my report to you, based on your budget meeting last month, will be, I'll have a much more detailed vision that I would want to share with you as far as buildings are concerned, that will be a conversation starter for us as far as buildings are concerned. This is just one part of that process. Another piece of information that you can have as far as the financials are concerned when we start talking about a bigger building project or projects.
Well, what money annually does the nine-and-a-half mils generate that we have to work with? Thirty-eight years, probably a building. 2.7. So 2.7 million goes real fast whenever you're starting to design a project. So what I'm saying is, as much as I hate borrowing money, if you have to get the money in place or all the planning we're looking at isn't going to work.
Right. And that's, again, a piece of information that we can have, hopefully by November for you. This says, this is what the financials mean. And again, at that point, you can say, "Financials don't make me comfortable, let's just back off."
And we can have bond counsel and our bond underwriters come in and give you some different scenarios. If the rates are still attractive... If the rates are still attractive, we could do another borrowing as early as January. And that may be the balance of what you want to do, or it may be another $10 million. But, the thought is initially, if we want to get this thing rolling, we can do a $10 million issue now, take advantage of the bank-qualified rates, and have some money to get the projects moving along.
When would you start making payments on that, though? Because you certainly want to overlap what you have now.
Well, that's what that chart shows, you wouldn't start paying on those until the other bonds are paid off.
Oh, within our existing millage?
Yes.
Okay.
If you have any questions during the week about it, give me a call, I'll try to answer them.
I'll have a nightmare if I'm not home.
You got my cell number, George.
What they're proposing, Dallas, is the ideal thing because, I mean, it's no extra expense to the taxpayers, you know, it's already there, that our debt service now is just going to continue, and we'll start the building renovation that are much, much needed.
Okay, any other matters before the board? Any other questions, any of you? Okay, for athletics and extracurricular, we have, you have those personnel in front of you. We also have the reimbursement credits earned that I will ask you to approve. We're also going to ask approval of purchase of custodial maintenance uniforms, and this is something that Brett, Mr. Bracco and I have dealt, have researched and dealt with at length, and I am going to now let Brett explain it to you, because I can do that.
And I'll not let Mr. Bracco explain it, because he's been dealing with it more than me.
You didn't bring anybody with you, Mr. Bracco, to pass the buck to.
Well, I think the overall is, within our current contract, we are to provide one uniform for custodians and maintenance a year.
Right.
And what we want to do is take that, you know, expense and purchase some uniforms up front that they can use and make sure that they're wearing them for safety. I mean, that's our number one concern, but the specifics.
Basically, it entails purchasing four shirts, four pair of pants, two pairs of shirts and a jersey for each custodian, is basically what it entails.
And since that is, you know, we have been on the hook for uniforms for the contract, one of the recommendations that came from our consultant that came in and looked at the custodial maintenance is that you really do need, when an outsider comes in, they need to know that a person that works for our district is an employee. Right now, there are some custodians and maintenance people that don't have the uniforms or they don't have them on, and sometimes it's hard to pick them out from a regular civilian as we're out there in the public. So, I think that's a very important, very important aspect for our district to say, "These are professional people that are working in this building. They are custodians, and they are maintenance people, and they can be picked out versus just a civilian that's in the building." I think that's an important aspect.
So, we could pretty much figure, once they purchase, they'll be worn, and everybody will be wearing them.
Correct.
And who cleans and maintains, is that their personal responsibility?
That's their responsibility. The program was going to be pretty costly to have the uniforms delivered and cleaned. We were going to have to purchase more uniforms, not purchase, but rent, but the rental fee took the char, it took the cost of the uniforms up, it was up pretty significant, and this was the most inexpensive way that we felt to give them adequate uniforms to do their job.
When would you look at the subs? Obviously, I can't ad freshly provide uniforms for them. So, when they're in the buildings, no one really particularly can distinguish them between a civilian, so to speak.
I think that, do we give them badges?
They have badges, yes.
Yeah, so they'd have that. Any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll have an approval, a list for substitute teachers and support personnel.
Oh, just real quick.
Yes.
Is it possible to have a sample of those uniforms that you look at for next week in Austin?
I do have some with me, if you want to see them, I can get them after the meeting.
If you want to model one, maybe, sure. Next week, get one on and see what it looks like.
I did bring the shirts and a pair of pants with me.
Okay, and since we're going to be touring the school after the meeting, if you want to, you have them with you, we can show them to you tonight.
I'd like to see that.
Yep. Thanks. We didn't have Karen Gardner ask her opinion on the uniforms, maybe we should have.
I'll get back.
I'll get back to it. We have a list of new parent volunteers. I'll ask you to accept and file information committee meeting minutes of September 4th, 2012. We will have the second reading of policy 248, which is unlawful harassment. That second reading will make that an official policy of the school board. I will ask you to tentatively adopt or approve revised policy 249, bullying and intimidation, which you have that in front of you, and that, again, will meet our state regulations that we have to abide by. And finally, a first reading of policy 123.1, recognition and utilization of club sports. Will, I'll ask you for a first reading of that, and you have that as well. Under taxes, insurance, and census, we will ask you to appoint a per capita occupational residence tax collector, and that is?
Larry Wojcik, who's also our penthouse treasurer.
Okay. And we have approval of exoneration of taxes, and that is?
There are two retainer ponds in Manor Borough that they are responsible for, that have been transferred from the contractor to the borough, and the borough is asking us to exonerate the taxes.
Any questions on any of those items?
One question.
Yes.
Is there a policy on lawful harassment? This young lady here asked me, and I'd asked her the same question.
I am sure there's not. Before I give the meeting back over to Dr. Trey for recognition of visitors, I would like Mr. Vinton to say, everybody, if you don't know Mr. Vinton, he is in charge of our video club, and could you introduce your student?
There's two here.
There's two, okay, there he is.
Samantha Prudanovich right here, and Alka Lentiaga, both in my day of three, four class, eighth, first, fifth period, and they are here momentarily. A lot of my officers are at the rally right now filming, they're great, so it's a little thin, but they're here, and this is our first go-around, obviously.
Mr. Vinton is very passionate about this subject, he does an excellent job, and I look forward to seeing what he and the students put together, it'll be fun.
Now, this is just a closed circuit filming here, this is not being shown anywhere, it won't be shown anywhere.
It's not being shown anywhere right now, it's not a live feed, no. We are experimenting with how we can best get this out, whether it's a link to, to a YouTube channel off our website, so, yes.
I'd better watch me to come.
I understand exactly where you're coming from, Mr. Leonard. So, thank you very much. Thank you for coming, Mr. Vinton, and I thank the students for participating in this. And after all, we want to make sure kids are involved in this, right? And they're going to be learning, is this some of the equipment that we got from Root Sports?
No, this is the equipment that's being leased from FanSonic. These are the cameras and tripods and microphones that the students use on a daily basis, both electronic news gathering and film production. The Root Sports stuff is more heavy-duty, kind of studio-based, it doesn't really move very easily.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, Mr. Vinton, and that's all I have, Dr. Trey.
Thank you, Dr. Butler, recognition of visitors, we have no visitors this evening, thank you very much for this late hour, we much appreciate that. The next meeting is Monday, October 8th, at the Penn Traverse High School library. I think for the fellow board members, we can use a five-minute break before we do a tour of the building. Thank you for attending this evening, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.